Motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Woolsey? Ms. Woolsey, I am so sorry.
That's okay. Yes.
Thank you.
I need a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, number one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and number two, only such public business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Karan?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, on to honors, awards, and recognitions. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. This evening, as a part of our traditional opportunities to recognize our students for special accomplishments, we're going to start with our Winning Choices Program winners. As part of Winning Choices, an essay contest is held each year. Students are encouraged to write an essay describing how good character traits help make them make winning choices. It's our pleasure this evening to introduce the countywide winners and to celebrate their accomplishments focusing on the positive impact of winning choices. We have invited them here tonight, along with their families, to be recognized by the school board with a certificate and an award. Sharon Zuckerwar, Supervisor of Social Studies and Character Education, will make the presentation. Sharon.
Good evening. As Ms. Blackburn said, the students of today will be tomorrow's leaders. They will be in charge of our communities and our nation, and in recognition of this fact, the Community of Character Committee seeks to challenge today's students to realize their approaching responsibility and develop their character in order to make positive differences in the world. For the past 15 years, Montgomery County Public Schools, the local Rotary Clubs, the Virginia Tech Departments of Athletics, and the Virginia Tech Corps of Cadet, as well as many local businesses, have joined together to sponsor events and engage students in activities focused on making positive choices. This year's events at the middle schools were focused on career choices, and then all of our high schools, high school students actually heard a very powerful presentation on the dangers of drinking and driving. In addition, an essay contest is held each year, and all Montgomery County students are encouraged to write an essay describing how, based on personal experience, good character traits help them make winning choices. Each school has a selection committee, and the student who writes the winning essay receives a $100 prize. Each school's winner's essay is then sent to a judging committee made up by local Rotary Club members, and then they select one winning essay from the elementary, middle, and high school level to receive an additional $200 prize. Finally, one overall winner is selected by this panel of judges to receive an additional $500. So it is our pleasure tonight to introduce these countywide winners and to celebrate their accomplishments focusing on the positive impact of winning choices. We've invited them here, along with their families, to be recognized with a certificate and their award. So I'd like to begin tonight with our elementary winner. At the elementary level, Parker Epperaly is our, is from Price's Thoric Elementary, and he is represented and escorted tonight by his mom and dad, Amy and Brad Epperaly. So at this point, I'd like to invite Parker and Mr. and Mrs. Epperaly up here to the podium. So Parker wrote an essay about the importance of integrity and how it can often be lost through poor decisions. So if you will join me, please, in congratulating Parker Epperaly as our elementary school winner. At the middle school level, we have Ms. Anya Robbins, who's from Auburn Middle School. She's an eighth grader, and she is escorted tonight by her father, John Robbins. So I'd like to invite them up to the podium, please. Anya actually is a two-time winner of the Winning Choices Essay Contest, and this year wrote an essay about the many faces of courage and how they play out in our everyday lives. So we'd like to congratulate Anya Robbins. Representing our high schools, our high school winner is Kira Klutniks, and she is from Rivendale, and she is joined tonight by her family, Carolyn and Valdis Klutniks, and her brother Andress. So let's invite them up, please. Kira wrote a very powerful piece on how, through the commitment of others, she was able to battle through life's struggles. She writes also about the commitment of those teachers and administrators in the Rivendale program who have helped her get on track to graduate and attend college, and so we are thrilled for Kira and this accomplishment. So congratulations, Kira. And finally, we have something brand-new this year. We have our, for the very first time, the committee selected an elementary student as the overall county winner. And so tonight, I'd like, if you would, please, join me in welcoming Ms. Kaylee Vest from Falling Branch Elementary, and she is escorted by many members of her family. Jennifer and Brent Montgomery, Tony and Melissa Vest, Trapper Vest, Tyler Vest, and Billy and Frances Bowers, and I believe Rhonda Pendleton as well. So please join me in welcoming Kaylee. Very proud bunch of folks of this young lady. So finally, Kaylee Vest, like I mentioned, is from Falling Branch Elementary, and she shared in her essay how being a responsible person in school, at home, and in the community creates trust. And if you can be trusted and responsible with the little things, then you can be trusted and responsible with the bigger things, too, which is just a very, very powerful message from this young author. So congratulations, Kaylee. So final congratulations to each of these essay winners, as well as all of the other students who won these awards at their buildings. And I think it's an important reminder for us how important our daily character is and the impact of a winning choice. So thank you all very much for the time.
Yes, Sharon?
Yes, sir.
I read these essays, I'm sure everyone did, but I just want to impress the fact that we have some budding writers amongst us, but Kyra?
Kira.
Incredibly powerful, incredibly powerful. And I want you to continue to write because you have a beautiful style, a very powerful word that you're telling us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ivers.
Thank you, Sharon, for your leadership with this program each year and for introducing our wonderful students and their families tonight. Congratulations to each of you. Our next item is our Seniors of the Month, and continuing the commitment of recognizing student achievement and accomplishments, four new Seniors of the Month selections have been made by high school principals in Montgomery County. Dr. Graham will introduce this part of the program, and we hope our, as many of our previous winners as can, will stay with us. We're going to take about a 10-minute break after the Seniors of the Month and give you an opportunity for board members to speak with you personally. Lois.
Good evening, everyone. A very special highlight of our board meeting is the recognition of a Senior of the Month from each of our four high schools. Photos and leadership profiles are displayed on the presentation board in the lobby. Our presentation format provides a snapshot of each senior and a quote from their administrator or teacher who nominated them for this recognition. Now, it's my pleasure to present Amanda Widener, Assistant Principal of Blacksburg High School. She will be followed by Kenneth Arnold, Assistant Principal of Christiansburg High School, and Danny Knott, Principal of Eastern Montgomery High School.
Good evening, board members, Ms. Blackburn, members of the audience. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight to present the Blacksburg High School January Senior of the Month. That individual is Bonnie Angermeyer. Bonnie is here tonight with her mother, Betsy Stinson, and her father, Paul Angermeyer, and at this time, I would like the three of them to come forward. The following comments reflect some of the highlights of Bonnie's high school career. Bonnie Angermeyer is a five-time state champion in track and cross-country, and has led her team to eight state team championships so far. Bonnie is very direct in her communication, relentless on the running trails, and outstanding in the classroom. She can be hard on herself if she doesn't quite accomplish a goal, but is back at it to do it better the next time. Her laugh is contagious and followed by lots of giggles from her teammates. She is serious, persistent, and dedicated to the task of being the best that she can be. She has been a tremendous role model for our younger athletes and will be greatly missed when she graduates. Bonnie will continue her education at the University of Virginia on a running scholarship, and she will compete for the Cavaliers Track and Cross Country Running Team. Bonnie, congratulations. Blacksburg High School is very proud of you.
Good evening, members of the board, and Ms. Blackburn. It is with great pride that I introduce to you Christiansburg High School's January Senior of the Month, Matthew Clifton Herndon. Matt is accompanied this evening by his parents, Cliff and Donna Herndon. Would you all please come forward to be recognized at this time? Matt is recognized as our January Senior of the Month for the class of 2015 for his commitment to excellence in all of his endeavors. He excels both in the classroom and as a standout player on the Christiansburg High School basketball team. I have had the unique perspective of coaching this young man in middle school and working with him during his four years at Christiansburg High School. He is truly a genuine person of the highest character, which is evidenced by his commitment to serving others through his work in the community. Those who know him have no doubt that a bright future lies ahead, and I'm very anxious to see where his journey will lead. We are very proud to have him represent Christiansburg High School. Matthew Herndon, our Senior of the Month. Mr. Lyons, Ms. Blackburn, members of the board. Eastern Montgomery High School is proud tonight to present two Seniors of the Month. Unfortunately, Mr. Stanley Norai could be here due to scheduling conflicts in December, and I apologize to Taylor Lewis, our December Senior of the Month, for that, but she is here with us tonight. If Taylor and her parents, Robert and Rebecca Lewis, would come forward and join me, I'd greatly appreciate it. EMHS math teacher Lisa Bissy had these kind words for our Senior of the Month. Taylor Lewis is one of the most rare students who excels in academics, athletics, and life that I have ever seen. A perfectionist, she has found a way to get her work done while still finding a balance between school, sports, and just being a teenager. She is lamented this year about her lack of community service, but her dedication to activities is a part of her that makes, is a part of, excuse me, is a part that makes time a very precious commodity for her. She umpires recreation games, plays softball for the Virginia Class Action Scrappers and EMHS, and is still able to maintain a GPA over 4.0. I am most proud of Taylor for all her work at Girl State this past summer. A homebody, Taylor really was afraid to go to Girl State for a whole week. Between her parents, her sister, her teachers, and her friends, we convinced her that this opportunity was too great to pass up. Reluctantly, she went, and it was the best experience of her life. She stepped outside of her comfort zone and discovered a whole new facet of her personality, one where she can get along with other people that she doesn't know, one where she is a leader amongst her peers, and one where she can experience new ideas and different cultures and expand her sense of community. She's an exceptional student, an amazing athlete, and an awesome person. Congratulations, Taylor. Our January Senior of the Month is Skylar Lepage Shaver. Skylar tonight is accompanied by her parents, Richard and Mary Shaver, her brother, Landon Shaver, her uncle Jonathan Long, and in spirit by her grandmothers, Carolyn Moore and Brett Long. If you would come forward to join me. Samantha Sharp, EMHS English teacher, said these kind words about Skylar. Skylar Shaver is an exceptional, exceptionally marvelous young woman. She is one of the hardest workers I have ever met. She maintains a 98 average in her sophomore-level college English class. She competes, completes every assignment thoughtfully and is continually looking for new ways to push herself. Skylar not only cares deeply for her schoolwork, she also has a kind heart that is attuned to her classmates. Skylar selflessly desires to bring joy to others. Not only is Skylar a dedicated student, she is also a dedicated cheerleader and softball player. She takes pride in the sport she participates in and is always encouraging her teammates. I am also proud of Skylar for getting into Virginia Tech. Skylar is doing, is going to do amazing things after high school. I believe her sweet spirit is rare, and she is most deserving of Senior of the Month Award. Congratulations, Skylar.
Again, I'd like to congratulate each of our winners this evening. You're such great examples of the wonderful students that we have in schools across Montgomery County. I'd like to thank your families for being here with you because we know that it takes support from a family that's behind you to help you get to the successful goals that you set as well. I apologize to you that I can't come down and greet you personally. I have a leg injury that has impaired my mobility pretty significantly, and so I'm going to watch as the board members greet you tonight and congratulate you. I'd like to thank Dr. Graham also for joining Mr. Lyons in congratulating you as you received your rewards this evening. Again, congratulations. 10-minute break.
Closed meetings, the school board sets aside up to 30 minutes for citizens to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when three minutes has passed. I see four who are signing, who have signed up tonight. I will call your name. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your address, and then your three minutes will begin. First up is Melanie Fane.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Fane, and my address is 311 Lucas Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia, 24060. I come to you today as a teacher and a parent of Montgomery County schools, in hopes that you will take some time to think about the effects of switching times between elementary students and secondary students. The choices that we make in our daily lives can affect others. Will this choice that lies before you have an effect on others for years to come? Please listen to the reasons why you should not switch the times between elementary and secondary schools. The safety and well-being of our children is dependent upon it. I have students in my classroom that have to wake themselves up to get ready for school. Just this week, a little boy in my class came in late twice, and when asked why he was late, he replied, "My mom didn't wake me up." This child and many others would not make it to the bus in time if you changed the school start times. There are also students in my classroom that have attention problems and have to be on medication so that they can focus. These students are so tired in the mornings due to not getting enough sleep for their age group. I've always wondered why parents can't have a routine that will get their children in bed by 8:00 to ensure that their child gets the required amount of sleep. Just recently, I understood why. I have a child that started kindergarten this year at four years old. Even though we have a routine in place and start the bedtime routine at 7:30 in hopes that he will be asleep by 8:00, this is seldom the case. Most nights, because of his high energy level, he does not go to sleep until 10:00. He wakes up at 6:00 so that we can get ready and leave for school by 7:00. His teacher thinks that he may have attention issues. One day not too long ago, my son went to the nurse's office complaining of a stomach ache. He ended up falling asleep. The nurse wrote me a note explaining that he was simply exhausted, and she just let him sleep. The students in my classroom that do have attention problems and are on medication have a hard time getting to sleep. One of the effects of certain attention-deficit medications is sleep deprivation. If school times change, these students who already have a tough time at school will lose even more sleep. Their little minds that are growing the fastest need rest. My son also attends a daycare in the mornings and afternoons. He gets sad every time I drop him off. He holds on to me and begs me to stay with him. If you make this time change, my child will have to stay at this daycare even longer. My family will have to pay more money. This is true for many families. Please let me paint you a picture. A little girl gets on the bus in the morning, excited to come to school because it's the only sure thing in her life. At the end of school, she goes home, and she has to wait for her parents to get off work.
Ms. Fane, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jonathan Black.
Hello again. Jonathan Black. I live in Blacksburg, and I apologize if this is a little bit out of order. We, I haven't heard the presentation from the School Start Times Committee, so it doesn't list a recommendation, or I don't know if there's going to be a vote tonight, but I wanted to bring your attention to one of the slides that is going to be presented, that was posted with that lists satisfaction with current start times from the surveys. So there were 7,500 or so respondents to the surveys, and on this slide, they're broken down into five groups: elementary staff, elementary parents, secondary students, secondary staff, and secondary parents. And they asked if the start times were too late just right or too early. And in all of those groups, with the exception of the secondary parents, they all said that the start times were just right. So that includes the secondary students think that the start times are just right, and the secondary staff, and the elementary staff. And so I guess I would encourage you to listen to the results of the survey. We're going to do a survey and get the response from the community and those particular stakeholders that I would recommend taking their opinion into account. They also listed several themes from those, among them childcare safety, suggestions of start times for 8:00 or 8:15, and I think the committee's probably going to cover that. But I would also submit that it's not that those groups don't necessarily not understand the research, that there are additional concerns in there that maybe haven't been taken into account or fully addressed by the committee. So I would just encourage you to listen to the survey and the results of the survey when you're making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Faith Taylor.
Hi, my name is Faith Taylor. I'm at 1404 Highland Circle, Blacksburg, Virginia. I sent all of you an email last week, and I thought, well, why don't, I can come, I'm here to speak. I'm just going to reiterate what I told you in my email, so I'm sorry if I repeat myself. I think a lot of people have been negative about the changing of the start times, and I thought that, well, shoot, everyone I talk to seems to be for it, so let, you know, let my voice be heard and others as well. I'm just going to reiterate what I said, which a lot of research has done, this is not something new. Schools are taking this on. I'm hoping that the committee will talk about those things and other local school districts, what they've done, and how it's affecting, hopefully in a positive way, the students. In my research that I did, it was shown that there's a better academic performance for students. They're better emotionally and their well-being. Personally, I have two elementary-age kids, one starting middle school next year, so it affects me either way. One thing for me is I think there's a discussion constantly about young kids being kids. Let's let them play. If they get an extra hour, that's more time they can do playdates in the afternoons and run around, and just be kids. I think they deserve that. And the older, the older kids, let's rein those guys in. Less time for them home alone in the afternoon. I'm going to have two girls, teenage girls, at one point, and I would like them to be at school a little bit longer. I do not want them to be home alone. I'm fortunate enough to be there now, but if I'm not, I don't want to give them too much time on their own. I understand that there's a lot of issues regarding this. I know bus stop safety has come up, and my argument for that is that if you have a young child, K through third grade, you are supposed to be at the bus stop with them. And the other day, when there was a delay, the teenagers were like halfway into the street waiting for the bus, so I'm like, all right, well, okay. So again, I think there's childcare, there's after-school activities, and what I ended with in my email to you was I looked at the, I forgot my notes at home, so I ended saying I looked at the comprehensive plan from, for 2008 to 2014, and what you say in there, if I can pull it up, is the Montgomery County Public Schools Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Process includes the following areas: one, student achievement; two, leadership, operations, and communication; three, safety and wellness. I think if you continue to read the plan, you'll see that by changing the start times, you're following, you know, what you've set out to do for our students and the school district. And I think the motto also implies engage, encourage, and empower, and I think that we deserve to give our students, let's follow the motto that the school board has created and let our students engage, empower, and encourage. Thank you.
Thank you. Last on the list is Glenn Chilco.
Good evening. My name is Glenn Chilco. I live at 125 Wooden Shoe Court in Christiansburg, Virginia. I'm also the music teacher at Kips Elementary. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. First, I'd like to talk about the success of the music program at Kips, and that is, I think, fully due to the extra ensembles that I'm able to offer at Kips. Kips Elementary has five extracurricular music groups. It has a recorder club, a drum club, two oriflary ensembles, which are percussion groups, and an advanced jazz band called the Three O'Clock Band. This year, the Three O'Clock Band was invited to travel to Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, pending board approval, to perform in a masterclass situation for the Pittsburgh Symphony. This is something that is reserved only for high school groups, but I applied for this, and our group was selected to go. The reason why I'm talking about this is because to be a member of the Three O'Clock Band, you also have to be a member of one of the five other ensembles. Most of the students in my Three O'Clock Band do morning ensembles. Those ensembles meet at 8:15 in the morning. Those ensembles meet at 8:15 in the morning. If the school's start times flip, those students would not be able to be in the Three O'Clock Band. None of the students in the morning groups would be able to participate in morning ensembles. We just heard that academic success is very important to everyone, all the stakeholders in this, and I'm here to tell you that instrumental music education is the key to academic success. Every study out there that shows the benefits of music shows that students that participate, specifically in instrumental music, perform higher in all measures of success compared to students that do not. I think it is absolutely imperative that our school offer these opportunities, and with a much earlier school start time, I would have to start ensembles at 6:55 if the school start time was 7:40 to be able to accommodate that, and I don't see a student showing up for that. Elementary music is the foundation for the music in the older groups, and I think the main way to get them hooked into this and to allow them to be so successful is through these ensembles. It's very important to me and I'm very passionate about it. I'd like to end by just saying that at Kips, because of the ensembles, 42% of the entire school participates in these groups and go on in middle school to do that. But that number's misleading because that's 42% of the whole school. Ensembles are only offered through grades three through five, so when you adjust the math for that, that's 88% of Kips Elementary participates in extracurricular music and goes on to middle school to be in band or choir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That is all I have for sign-ups tonight. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? Please step forward, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Marin Rieger. I live at 1700 Masada Way in Blacksburg. I'm the childcare coordinator for Virginia Tech. I spoke to you last month about some very specific issues, and today I'd like to speak about just a couple more. I have been receiving phone calls from childcare providers all over the area, wondering what I'm up to. Today, I opened a part-time parent cooperative childcare facility for Virginia Tech. Big day. I'm receiving these phone calls because childcare providers are wondering what the status of children will be in the fall. Right now, they're enrolling students for their after-care programs and before-school programs for this fall. They count on the revenue from these bookings to be able to plan and coordinate and facilitate these programs in the fall. I was hired at the end of May and began working in June and have moved mountains to be able to open a facility in this short period of time. It's a one-classroom facility that serves 15 children at a time. I know for certain that if this decision is made to switch school times, and that if it is done with too little time between the decision and the start of a school year, childcare providers will be unable to secure facilities, to hire staff, to potentially license and develop new programs, to be able to publicize their programs and enroll children. They will also be unable to cooperate with one another, to come up with cooperative pricing that would reduce the pricing and make it fair and equitable for all families. So I'd encourage you, whatever the decision is, to slow things down a bit and give childcare providers in our area a fair amount of time to be able to react to the situation. The consequences of not doing so could be disastrous for many families. Ideally, we wouldn't have any latchkey kids. We'd have kids asking for more vegetables and putting themselves in bed and getting themselves ready in the morning, but we don't deal with ideals here. We deal with great families and great students and people that work very, very hard, but they do the best with what they have. And if we throw them a curveball with not enough notice, we will have an uptick in the amount of children watching themselves after school. We'll have a huge uptick in the number of families who cannot afford the childcare and have to pull out of it. It will impact the economy of this area in ways that I think should be carefully considered as the decision is being made, whichever way the decision goes. But timing is a very important issue on this, and I would encourage you to take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
Brad Hill, 3855 Eagle Country Drive, Ryanar, Virginia. A little bit nervous, I haven't been up here in a long time. Glad to see you again. First of all, again, to speak with the school schedules, I'm doing this probably because my son doesn't want me to, but I'm going to go ahead and speak anyway. Some things that I've considered, I did a little of the research and spent some time to it too, but albeit probably not near as much as you all have. And what I saw is it does, the research does support a later start time for secondary students. But what I kind of gathered was it seemed like the optimal time was between like 8:00 and 8:30. I'm looking at that going, well, really, we're not that far away from that with our secondary start times anyway. So I'm going to kind of throw a monkey in the wrench here. Instead of saying flip-flop things, how about a little bit of a compromise? And what I mean by that is instead of starting maybe at 7:40 or 7:30 or wherever we are, move those start times a little bit later and start secondary maybe 8:10 or 8:15. You hit the optimal times of what the research seemed to point at. Now, the reason I say that is a couple of things. First of all, if we move secondary a little bit later, or all schools a little bit later, it gives us a little bit more time in the wintertime to be able to make decisions about school closings, delays, et cetera, and maybe even whether or not to have a one-hour, two-hour, or full closing. Second of all, sports-wise, I'm not so much concerned about practices and interfering with practices. I'm a coach, I've coached, and I know, and I've grown up in that where it doesn't really affect it that much. But what it can affect is with our new block schedule and stuff like that, we, in the Auburn community, we have a lot of students that miss school already to go to sporting events that are far away. And if you start school later, that's another hour of class that they could be missing. On a block schedule, that's two periods a day. Okay? That's a lot of class academic work that could be missing, and that really concerns me more than anything. Lastly, is I thought about this this morning, is when you really think about it, if you start elementary students sooner, honestly, who's going to get those students up and onto the bus? Yeah, a lot of the parents are going to do that, but you know what? I bet you a lot of the secondary students are going to do that too, and now it defeats the whole purpose of getting them up on a later time. So I guess what I'm saying is maybe let's look at a compromise. That way, it doesn't interfere so much with the daycares. Everything kind of stays in place. You start school a little bit later. I started 8:10, 8:15. You got out at 3:10, 3:15. Practices could start, and everything could, you know, work out a whole lot better. Research, I know, points to things that work well. Research also says, and I'm not going to tell anybody I said this, research also says that if you have a certain dress code, students act better. Well, we haven't adopted that here yet, and I don't encourage us to do so. Let's do what works best for our community, and I honestly think what works best for this community is to keep things protocol, but just start it a little bit later. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, public address is closed. Next up is the personnel report. Do I have a motion to adopt the personnel report as presented?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Payment of the bills. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is our financial summary report. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the financial summary report?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now turn it over to Ms. Blackburn for superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. This evening, we have Rick Weaver and Patty Goudreau to update the board on this year's initiatives in career and technical education and science, including STEM. It's a pleasure to have Patty and Rick with us tonight. I think you're going to be pleased with the progress we've been making. They spoke with you back in the spring last year, and we're here to give you the next step in our progress assessment today.
Thank you. As the superintendent said, we're going to give you a quick update on where we stand with STEM education today. As you know, to complement the traditional STEM curriculum that we've offered for years in science and CTE classrooms, we have collaboratively focused on implementing the new MCPS Governor STEM Academy and initiated new STEM activities at the elementary level. Our Governor STEM Academy application to the Virginia Department of Education in the form of a grant proposal was approved last spring, and we began enrolling students this fall. The enrollment process is ongoing and simply involves asking students to commit to a specific plan of study, a plan that will incorporate several requirements for the academy completion. This allows us to have a very open-ended process that will allow any student or parent of interest to begin the process and hopefully motivate those students to, in large numbers, complete the process and graduate from the STEM Academy. To date, we have pre-enrolled about 300 interested students in all four high schools and are working on developing their individual plans of study.
There's a lot of talk about STEM in the education world. We wanted to review some of what we've encountered. The basic acronym stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Many agree that art should be included because STEM projects include working with form and color, so STEAM was offered. The healthcare professions certainly incorporate STEM, so STEM is another thought, or you may have heard STEM H. Others want to see design added to the mix and created seed. You can see from these acronyms that STEM and its variants include many career areas. We chose to focus the initial academy around advanced manufacturing in order to build on a prominent and growing employment opportunity here in the New River Valley. We hope to expand the STEM Academy in the future to incorporate more aspects of STEM, such as health occupations and the arts. MCPS has support from the Institute for Creativity, Arts, and Technology, ICAT, at Virginia Tech, the Junior Achievement Organization, Radford University's College of Science and Technology, Rona-Blacksburg Technology Council, and the Workforce Investment Board. These partners have supported our efforts to build STEM education.
If you would refer to this handout in your board docs, or you may have a printed copy as well. This handout is a description of the 16 career clusters that we're using to organize STEM activities. The National Career Clusters Framework provides a vital structure for organizing and delivering quality CTE programs through comprehensive programs of study. In total, there are 16 career clusters in the National Career Clusters Framework, representing more than 79 career pathways to help students navigate their way to greater success in college and career. If you can think of a career, it's in this framework. As an organizing tool for curriculum design and instruction, career clusters provide a framework of the essential knowledge and skills related to that cluster and their career pathways. These clusters function as a useful guide in developing programs of study, bridging secondary and post-secondary curriculum, and for creating individual student plans of study for a complete range of career options. This helps students discover their interests, their passions, and empowers them to choose the educational pathway that can lead to their personal success in high school and in college, and post-high school or college. We are using a STEM Academy to develop a model for using career clusters to develop these individual career plans. Based on these clusters, we are developing academic and career plans. We have purchased a software package and are testing it with the STEM Academy students in the hope that this tool will facilitate the development of more effective academic and career plans. An academic and career plan is a process and a product. The process assists students in planning how to reach their career goals and is flexible and ongoing. The process increases the level of collaboration between students, parents, teachers, and counselors as we all assist students in career planning. The product is the individual plan of study that each student will use to guide them through high school and beyond.
Referring to your next handout, you'll see that there are a variety of program areas and pathways related to advanced manufacturing. Program areas include engineering, manufacturing, computer information and robotic controls, and architecture and construction design. All these programs include skill sets that are important to advanced manufacturing. We selected this focus for our first STEM Academy, not only because we had a wide range of courses in place to support the academy, but also because research from the U.S. Department of Labor, the Virginia Bureau of Labor, and the Virginia Employment Commission tell us that there are numerous and growing high-tech employment opportunities in the New River Valley and beyond. Also, we have strong industrial support through our partnerships in Montgomery County. And the skills related to advanced manufacturing are not only useful in local factories and plants, but are also valuable to the many smaller, high-tech businesses that are growing in our area.
It's important to note that we have attempted to encompass all career areas in this academy from the factory floor to the factory president. So what does it take to complete the STEM Academy? As I said earlier, we have about 300 students currently interested in completing the requirements for the STEM Academy. Those who do complete the requirements will have a STEM Academy seal on their diplomas and will simultaneously graduate from their home school and from the academy. The requirements for completers are as follows. They should complete an individual plan of study as a roadmap for meeting the requirements of the academy and for preparing for a career. This plan of study will include both high school courses and post-high school goals. Students must complete a sequence of designated CTE courses consisting of a minimum of two classes. They must pass the national certification test related to their CTE sequence. They must earn at least nine college credits in dual-enrolled or advanced placement courses. There are plenty of opportunities in both of these areas for students to achieve this goal. And they should maintain a three-point average in all STEM courses. Academy students must also complete 15 hours of work-based experience. They have a variety of opportunities provided by participating businesses in our area. Finally, academy students must participate in a co-curricular activity that is related to advanced manufacturing skills, such as the MCPS Robotics Team, where students with a wide variety of skill sets form a team to design and build a robot, which I think most of you have seen the results of. Or another possible co-curricular is the Cyber Patriots Team, a team of students attempting to resolve cybersecurity risk. And we are actively developing other co-curricular activities to fit students' interests and needs.
We recognize that we need to provide some quality learning experiences for our students at a young age if they're going to make informed choices about their career interests later. Each elementary school has been working on ways to do this. Here are some examples. Several schools participated in a challenge where they created cardboard models around a theme, such as transportation. Students made everything from horse-drawn wagons to hot-air balloons. Several schools are developing a new challenge with the help of ICAT, which connects high school students with the elementary feeder schools around a STEM theme. Essentially, the older students create a high-tech raceway in elementary gyms that allow younger students to design their own cars and then interact with the technology. Other schools are designating makerspaces where they collect lots of scrap material and encourage students to plan and create something new using their own imaginations. Another way we are promoting STEM in the science curriculum is by adding a new course that will support students through a two-year, hands-on approach to physics. This course covers the same physics standards as in the traditional one-year course, but adds many design-and-build applications to demonstrate the content. We believe that physics is a very relevant area of science for STEM careers, and we want to encourage more students to choose this course. Another change in the science curriculum is the new third-grade assessment. This will replace the science SOL test and instead provide a performance-based task. Students will experiment with pretend eggs to see which ones might be better suited for birds in terrestrial or aquatic environments. One final note for science is to continue the emphasis on safety. We have purchased new software for science teachers to track their chemical inventories and have information at their fingertips for handling spills and leaks. Our safety plan conforms to the new globally harmonized system for chemical labeling. Rick and I thank you for this opportunity to update you on STEM education and wonder if you have any questions for us.
Question. Thank you for all this information. I was wondering, on this list of classes, are these classes offered currently today for high schools? for high school students?
Yes, they are all currently offered.
And where, do they go to different high schools, or is it just...
A majority of them are at CHS, but there's a significant number at all four high schools.
Are they taught by an actual teacher, or online, or by...
Yes, they all have live teachers.
Okay. And the applied physics class, is that going to start this upcoming school year?
In the fall.
It's in our catalogs for enrollment. With student interest, we hope to offer it.
Right. How much funding do you need to keep this going?
At this moment, nothing extra. We're not here to ask for anything tonight. In the future, that's an open question. We hope to expand the STEM Academy by adding other program areas. Health is maybe one we'll consider next, or a number of possibilities. As soon as we get our software up and running and are producing plans of study and have that system in place, then we're going to talk to additional teachers in additional program areas. And we are told that expanding our STEM Academy is as simple as writing the DOE and telling them we're ready to add a program to it. So we hope to do that soon. But still, we will be using existing programs and existing teachers in the short term, so I don't see any immediate need for extra funding.
Do you have a limit on how many students can be in the program?
No.
Board members, any other questions?
Do you have anything to do with Let's Code Blacksburg?
Well, Let's Code Blacksburg is part of RackSpace, and they certainly have been at several of our meetings helping us to plan our STEM Academy. What they do is kind of like enrichment, so it gets students' interest up in coding and learning to program computers, and so we see that as a very beneficial possibility for our students.
The other thing is, I have a comment I want to make. In the Virginia School Board Association newsletter of January 2015, it said that of the top forty-five job categories in Virginia, thirty-five will require some post-secondary education. And it goes on to say that the skilled trades are aging, there's an acute need of qualified, skilled applicants, and that in 2022, we will have half a million jobs, new jobs in Virginia, and forty-five percent of those jobs will require specialized technical skills such as STEM, STEAM, and STEM H. So you're right on cue.
We've been hearing those figures, and that's really why we're doing this.
Okay. You said you have three hundred students who have applied?
Yes. And it's not an application process in the greater sense, it's a process of saying, "I want to pursue this." So these are three hundred students who have heard our explanation of what this is and what they would have to do to receive recognition, and they have said, "Yes, I want to do that."
Okay, and this is at the high school level?
Four high schools.
Okay. So what are the demographics of the students?
I have student names, but I have not broken it out demographically, but I could probably do that.
Because unfortunately, African-American and Hispanic students have not understood that this is a career path that they can go into. And one of the things that I heard from a group of students was they did not understand the requirements they needed for some of the careers that they wanted to go into. And these are surely some of the careers they would probably be interested in.
We really hope the plans of study will be key in helping all students plan for their career in the future. We're just getting it started with the STEM Academy, but we hope that that's going to be in place for all of our students.
Okay, well, sometimes there needs to be a little extra effort made in some areas with groups of students because they're not always encouraged to go that way. So I would like to see what the makeup of these students are.
Okay.
Do these students start, are these all freshmen going that path, or some starting later in their high school career?
We've talked to students at all grade levels at this point, seniors knowing that it would be very difficult for them to achieve this late in their high school career, but we actually may have a couple of students, seniors, who will accomplish this status this year because of work they'd done previously. But mostly underclassmen.
Any other questions?
I just have one more. The third-grade performance assessment, could you explain that a little bit more? What's the purpose of that? What are we trying to do with that exactly?
The state dropped the SOL for third-grade science, and they are requiring school divisions to create their own performance-based assessment. So we're trying to move ours into the realm of scientific investigation and inquiry, as is social studies. So this is a way to connect more with STEM and get that kind of open-ended thinking and exploration going on.
Are we getting good feedback from the state saying that this is going to accomplish what they are wanting us to accomplish as a result of not having the science SOL?
Not yet. Most school divisions haven't administered assessments yet for grade-three science and social studies, so we'll probably hear a lot this summer and into next year.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just want to thank Patty and Rick for building on the programs that we already have, trying to take our students into the future, and they've done it on a shoestring budget. I think our STEM grant from the governor, I don't remember, the amount was so small, I didn't know how we would be able to do anything, but you've done a great deal and tied it into our career and technical programs, and appreciate the inventory you've done recently with students and their interest in career and technical and the extension to the elementary. I saw the same article that Mr. Ivers was addressing, and you know, one of the things when I came in yesterday, or today, I guess it was, I've lost track of the days, is to make sure that we're all, that we're engaged with all of these people. And they said, "Oh, yes, every one of these people, we're involved with and have first-name talking conversations with on a regular basis." And so the article said some very complimentary things about the job that K-12 is doing with limited resources and how it's got to be supported by the folks out in the community who are in the business as well, that the schools cannot do this alone. And I thought that was such a very important and powerful statement. So thank you again for all the work that you've done.
I'm sorry, I do have one. Since we were talking about finances and funds, how does e-Backpack play into your program? Have you, is there a connection there?
There's not a direct corollary. It overlaps wherever there are freshmen in our programs that we've identified in the STEM Academy. That's the interface.
One small way it will help, though, is the academic and career planning software is web-based, so if students wanted to work on their academic and career plan at home with their families, they will now have a device that will allow them to do that, so perhaps that's a good connection.
Well, the point that I'm trying to make is that this year, all of our ninth graders will have a device, and next year, we hope that all ninth and tenth graders will. And that just seems to play in to the STEM, STEAM, STEM H, if everyone has the same implement.
Yes, in that respect, it would, as we build this program out and all of the STEM Academy students potentially have devices.
So the tunnel vision is beginning to move out, I hope, so you can look at that closely?
Okay.
Good.
Thanks again.
Thanks.
Okay. Our next item this evening is a presentation from our School Starts Committee, School Start Times Committee. The committee has been working very hard since early in November to analyze data, to review research, to personalize a survey for our community stakeholders, to bring you information to consider as you weigh the potential to move our secondary schools to a later start time. I'd like to thank each member for their time and service. You've put in lots of hours, and I've seen the results of your work and read many of the research papers that you have ferreted out from the world of research that's out there for us to take a look at, and I do want to say a very special thank you for your efforts. Also, Dr. Graham, who has facilitated the work of this committee, I'd like to thank you. And at this time, Dr. Graham is going to introduce the presentation.
Good evening again. Tonight, the School Start Time Committee will present for the second time. I would again like to thank the committee for their diligent work, as Mrs. Blackburn has just described, and their service on this project. Presenters representing the committee tonight will be Sean Bissell, a student at Blacksburg High School, Chris Jordan, who is a parent with children in both elementary and secondary schools in Montgomery County, and Lieutenant Jimmy Bowyer with the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department. I do want to share a couple of slides with you before they begin. Want to remind you that the committee began with the why. MCPS is considering a change in school start times because of the abundance of research suggesting academic and health benefits for students. Therefore, the school board passed a resolution on October the seventh directing a committee to study school start times. The committee has held four meetings to date, and they presented to the school board prior to the public hearing, which was held on December sixteenth. The committee includes representatives from each strand of Montgomery County public schools and also includes representatives from many of MCPS constituencies. That includes parents of students, business and community leaders, childcare providers, administrators, teachers, coaches, curriculum supervisors, student services, and law enforcement representatives, along with medical and transportation advisors. So we tried to establish a committee that represented everyone, and I would like committee members to raise their hands. So as you will see, many are here tonight. Thank you. So tonight, we're going to focus on a survey. The committee developed five surveys, which were administered in December. We received seven thousand six hundred and forty-nine responses. We will share briefly what the surveys revealed. We have grouped our information around topics considered in the surveys and research, but we were very pleased with the number of responses. So I'm going to begin with a little bit of a summation. Surveys found no consensus among the groups beyond a shared recognition of the value of sleep and its effect on alertness. We found that the research supports later school start times for secondary students. We found that the research on elementary school start times is limited, a fact that the committee confirmed with researchers, I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. And we found that research on sleep, however, indicates that elementary students typically fall asleep earlier and can wake earlier. We contacted Dr. Finley Edwards and Dr. Peggy Keller, the authors of two studies that had information about elementary school start times. They confirmed that the research on elementary start times is limited. Both researchers said they were not aware of other research on elementary school start times. Finley Edwards shared possible reasons for the lack of elementary research. He explained that in his experience, researchers spend time on studies they believe will yield significant results. Since sleep research indicates that elementary students can fall asleep earlier and wake earlier, researchers don't expect significant differences at the elementary level related to school start times. Therefore, research directed to the elementary level is limited. In Dr. Edwards' research in North Carolina, start times had a large positive effect at the eighth-grade level, while effects were insignificant at the sixth-grade level and below. So Dr. Keller found, in contrast, Dr. Keller found negative effects on academic outcomes at the elementary level in her study in Kentucky. So as you see, the studies do not agree on the effects of start times for the elementary students. At this time, Chris Jordan is going to share a little bit more about our research. Chris?
This is a busy slide, I'm going to give you a moment to look at it. So the slide shows the recommendations for student sleep and the information on sleep from the surveys. Research indicates that lack of sleep is significantly impacting student performance. Unfortunately, the surveys revealed that only four percent of secondary students report getting more than nine hours of sleep per night. This is in Montgomery County. An additional nineteen percent of secondary students report getting eight to nine hours of sleep per night. Forty-five percent of secondary students get less than seven hours of sleep a night. Fifty-seven percent of elementary parents report their child is getting nine or more hours of sleep per night. The majority of secondary students report that it is not easy to wake on school days. Fifty-five percent of elementary parents say that it is easy for their students to Comparing the results of the survey with professional recommendations, Montgomery County students are not getting enough sleep. Elementary students are getting more sleep than secondary students, but in both groups, some students are not getting enough sleep. Most elementary students, most elementary parents reported that students are getting nine to ten hours of sleep. Ten or more hours are recommended. The sleep that is most pronounced among secondary students was over seventy percent getting less than eight hours of sleep. Expanding on this first bullet here, only twenty-one percent of secondary staff report that their students are most energetic in the morning. Fifty-three percent found the most alert in the middle of the day, and twenty-six percent late in the school day. Expanding on the third bullet, while forty-three percent of secondary students are tired most days, an additional forty-six percent of students report feeling tired or sleepy during school sometimes. It's almost ninety percent. The survey findings reflect the research showing that lack of sleep is affecting secondary students. Numerous high-quality studies published in the last two decades have strongly demonstrated the link between high-quality sleep and academic performance, with the most dramatic gains shown for disadvantaged students. Some highlights of these studies include SAT score increases of eight percent in math and twenty-five percent in verbal for top-scoring students in Minnesota. A meta-analysis of start times conducted by the Brookings Institution found that early start times are as harmful to student achievement as having a highly ineffective teacher for a year. A study in Wake County found that delaying start times by one hour resulted in average increases in test scores of more than two percent, with the strongest effects occurring among the lowest-performing and disadvantaged students. These academic effects are in addition to the other health, behavioral, and safety improvements associated with more sleep. Sean will continue from here.
I'm Sean Bissell from Blacksburg High School. From the survey of secondary students, we learned that most complete homework after school, as shown in the graphics above. Also shown are the number of hours that students have of homework each night. In terms of transportation, the majority of students at all levels ride the bus to and from school. The committee received surprising results from the surveys on the topic of childcare. The number of older siblings who provide childcare for younger siblings on a regular basis is lower than what we might have guessed. Only twelve percent of secondary parents report that their secondary students provide childcare for siblings on a regular basis. Thirty-four point nine percent of elementary parents report that changing start times would result in a need for evening childcare. Of students who participate in after-school activities such as sports or clubs, most spend about two hours per day in the activity. In the area of sports, sports is one of the most frequently mentioned areas of extracurricular activities, excuse me. Research indicated the following points in regard to sports. Most districts that have moved to later secondary start times have experienced few problems related to athletics. Many districts have seen increased participation in sports, as shown in Edna, Montana, and improved performance by their athletic teams, Wilton, Connecticut, and Seattle, Washington. Research has also shown that sleep deprivation has a severe impact on coordination and endurance. Here are some of the effects on practices and events. Shifting the current practice time slots may lengthen some students' athletes' days or require scheduling alternatives. Students may need to leave before the end of the school day to travel to some athletic events. Impacts on outdoor sporting events and practice schedules would depend on available facility lighting, home and away, and timing of competitions. A later secondary start time would decrease students' wait time between the end of the school day and the arrival time of many coaches. We would like to address some of the needs for specific sport teams. Track and golf events are often scheduled early, so those sports would be the most impacted. I'll also go... I'll also go through some of the other sports, football, soccer, swimming, volleyball, basketball, and wrestling. Students may need to leave before the end of the school to travel to some game locations. For cross-country, it would have an impact when traveling overnight or during championship season. For baseball and softball, impacts will depend on facility lighting and timing of competitions. For golf, significant impact because most matches start at one or two, as I said. Competition cheer would need to secure a practice space for fall season during, during the three to four o'clock time slot. For track, many meets start at 4:30 during inter-season, requiring students to depart by 2:00 to 2:30. For tennis, there may need to, may need more away games at facilities that have lights. Band music and choral, practice times may run later than they currently do. Likewise, most employers would generally adjust to allow students to continue to work. The exception would be that childcare providers may not be able to employ high school students. At this time, Lieutenant Bowyer will talk about the district comparisons and schedule
Let's start with schedules. As we looked at scheduling options, we checked to see if any other divisions within Region Six have schedules which elementary schools begin around 8:00 AM. The slide shown shows a few examples. They, oops, maybe not. There we go, sorry. As you can see, Allegheny, Bodatuck County, City of Martinsville, Brenning City, Brenning County, Salem are among the ones in Region Six, but there's also others such as Henry County, Danville City, and Patrick. They all have similar start times as well as the one shown. The committee reviewed several schedules and determined that the following three were feasible for consideration. The first, of course, is our current schedule in which elementary schools begin at 9:00 AM and the secondary schools begin at 7:40 AM to 7:50. The two other schedules that we looked at and were offered in the survey, Plan A is a flipped schedule. In this plan, elementary schools would start, in this plan, elementary schools would switch to the 7:40 start time. And then Plan B is also a flipped schedule, but the elementary schools would not start until 7:50. The schedule was developed to allow buses to start picking up students later at 6:50 for elementary rather than at a 6:30 start, pickup time as indicated in Plan A. There were also a number of schedules that were considered and not selected by the committee. The first one, as indicated on the slide, was not selected because of the associated cost. We're looking at the bottom line on that one. But, on the other side, this schedule would allow secondary to end at 3:30 PM, which is common in our region, and allow for later pickup times in the morning for the elementary school students. Number two was not selected because of the committee felt that the dismissal time of 3:50 for secondary students was, was too late. And then the third schedule that we looked at in committee and was not selected by the committee, this was not selected because the dismissal time of 4:00 PM was determined to be too late for elementary and a start time of 8:10 on this schedule does not meet the resolution target of an 8:30 start time for secondary schools. I do want to note that the committee is willing to revisit these or any other schedules if the, if the board so desires. Now let's look at some of the satisfaction with current start times according to the survey. Satisfaction with current start times results revealed that almost 60% of secondary parents believe that the current school, the school, current secondary school start time is too early. If you look at the results from the other groups, they indicated that the times are either too late or just right. Moving on to the secondary schedule preferences on the survey, looking at the specific schedules, preferences were mixed. Secondary students were basically split 50/50 with half preferring to stay with the current time, as shown in the yellow on the slide, and half selecting one of the new proposed schedules which are shown in blue. Now on the second row, if you move down one, 55% of secondary staff wanted to keep the current schedule. But, as reflected in the third row, which shows the results from secondary parents, the majority wanted to change to one of the proposed new schedules. Only 40% of the parents that responded to the survey wanted to keep the current schedule. Now looking at the elementary schedule preferences, again, we had mixed results on the survey. The majority of elementary staff opted to change, as shown in the blue shades on the top row. On the bottom, the majority of elementary parents wanted to keep the current schedule. So summarizing that, this slide and the one before, elementary staff and secondary parents wanted to change. Secondary staff and elementary parents want the schedules to stay the same. And again, the students were basically split, they were mixed. Now, there were 3,008 of the 7,652 survey respondents that made comments. And again, that's 3,008 respondents out of 7,652 made comments in addition to answering the survey questions. These, what you see on the slide are the most prevalent and prominent themes from all of those comments that the committee looked through. And, and in no particular order, these major concerns were childcare needs, safety, academic performance, family time, and work schedules, athletics, and after, after-school activities. There was a suggestion for an 8 or 8:15 elementary start time, concerns about change, and the belief that the secondary students would still not sleep more if the start times changed. Now at this time, I'll go back to Chris and Chris will give you further summation of the, the research.
As was stated earlier, we contacted Dr. Keller and Dr. Edwards in an attempt to find more elementary research. Unfortunately, they confirmed that they were, these were the only two known. The committee carefully considered both Dr. Keller's and Dr. Edwards' work. We found Dr. Edwards' methodology to be more compelling and more consistent with neuroscience theory. Dr. Keller's work is more susceptible to confounding variables. In other words, it's more difficult to be sure that the reasons for the differences that she discovered are a result of the later start time and not to some other unanalyzed variable. Dr. Edwards' research appears to be the most credible due to his methodology. His research suggests that early elementary start times will have no adverse effects. The research summation for secondary. There's a great deal of research out on this. Extensive research shows teens need nine hours of sleep. And the committee looked at a wealth of research throughout the process. Some of the key findings were, teens still need about nine hours of sleep, but the hormones that regulate sleep make it difficult for teens to fall asleep before 11:00 PM or to be alert before 8:00 AM. Research attributes to sleep deprivation common in adolescents to biological changes in the brain during this critical developmental time, not to poor parenting or teens refusing to sleep. The teen years are considered especially critical in brain development as the foundation for adult brain functioning is laid during the teenage years. Research reveals numerous benefits of more sleep for teens, including improved student achievement with better performance on state tests, on college preparatory tests, and in the classroom, better physical and mental health, and improved behavior. Research has also shown that later start times result in fewer car crashes. In short, sleep deficits affect all aspects of students' lives. Effects are particularly concerning in light of the brain science research which emphasizes the importance of the teenage years and the development of adult brain functioning. The brain undergoes a massive rewiring during the teenage years, so sleep deficits during this time can have harmful lifelong effects. The committee found the research on early elementary start times is limited and confirmed that finding by talking with researchers. There's a great deal more research available on the Montgomery County Public website, Montgomery County Public Schools website. I encourage you to take a look and we'll be happy to provide more if you're interested. This is a chart showing some of the experiences in other districts. The committee spoke with superintendents or their staff in districts where elementary begins around eight. These divisions indicated satisfaction and no plans to change. In fact, after a change several years ago, Martinsville returned to the later start time for secondary students due to parental preferences and benefits. A case in the research found the parents of secondary students in a Minnesota district that enacted change went from a majority opposed to the proposed change to 92% in support of the change one year later. I'll ask Dr. Graham to finish out.
So we began with a little summation and I'm going to take you back to the summation. The surveys found no consensus among the groups beyond that shared recognition of the value of sleep and its effects on alertness. As you saw, it was split in many cases as to whether to change or not change. Research supports later start times for secondary, as we've shown you tonight. Research on elementary school times is limited, a fact that the committee did confirm with researchers. Again, the research on sleep however indicates that elementary students typically fall asleep earlier and wake earlier. Many divisions in our area do have a successful schedule with early elementary start times followed by later secondary times. So that left us to looking at the key elements of our committee findings. The committee reviewed an extensive amount of research, received a wealth of input. They gave serious time consideration and deliberation to this recommendation, realizing that a change in start time does impact our students, our families, and our entire community. Consideration was given to safety, childcare, the many challenges of change. We know that change is difficult. It was given to what has been successful in other divisions and ultimately what is best for students. Given the survey, survey results, the community input, the evidence and research around sleep, and the health and benefits to student learning, the committee suggests, suggestion to the superintendent is to change school start times. The academic and health benefit for students was our deciding factor because as you saw, there wasn't consensus from the survey. So the academic benefits and the health benefits were definitely the deciding factor and the prevailing reason for our suggestion. The committee recognizes that any change would need careful and thoughtful planning. So that is our suggestion to the superintendent and to the board. Of the plans offered in the survey, Plan B, the, is the one that would best meet the needs at this time. The committee does wish to thank the parents, staff, and students for their participation and input, as well as thank the superintendent and board for considering all of the information that we've provided for you. At this time, we'll be glad to answer questions.
I have a question. As far as the questions, one of the things that concerns me is how the questions were made. I mean, of course, people that are, are parents that are doing this survey on elementary education, and saying, well, yeah, they're alert and they're learning, well, it's already nine o'clock. Well, sure they are. But that doesn't mean they're going to it at 7:30, you know? I mean, my concerns, I was in wage yesterday and I was going through the line and the lady stopped me and said, you're on the school board, aren't you? Please don't change the times because, and the lady behind me in line chimed in and said, well, I filled out the, you know, the survey and, I mean, everywhere I go, I'm really shocked because everywhere I go, people stop me and say, you know, I just don't, please don't change them. And to me, some of the questions, I mean, even the same one when he was sharing with, I mean, 58% say, 75% said, leave it alone, you know? So my concern is just some of the questions, you know? And as far as the homework after school, well, that to me, when I first read it, made it sound like, do you do your homework right after school or they're doing it right after school? Well, you know, I live in a teenage world and I don't have any teenagers that start their homework right after school. And most of the reasons teenagers don't go to bed till 11 o'clock is because they go to bed as soon as they get home from school and they take naps. You know, I've got two that are grown and one that's a teenager now. And I just, like I said, some of the concerns that I have are the questions in the way they were presented. It doesn't really say the things I was looking for to hear. You know, like I said, I mean, it's, I agree, high school goes too early. I agree with that. It's consistently gotten earlier since my oldest has graduated in 2008. So I agree with we need to change that. But I don't agree at the sake of little ones having to get on the bus at 6:35 in the morning. I mean, I just can't imagine anybody wanting to put a five-year-old on the bus that early. And in a perfect world, as we had one speaker speaking, that all parents will be out there. In a perfect world, that would happen. But we don't live in a perfect world and that's not going to happen.
To speak to how we developed the survey, we pulled surveys from many other divisions that have already gone through this process.
Right.
They were extensive. So we tried to narrow it down to items that would best represent our county. And then the committee took a draft survey, looked back at it, and tried to make sure it was a non-bias survey. That was answers that gave us, or questions that would give us factual information.
And understandably, you got to pick your questions somewhere, but do you see where I'm coming from? Like I said, the teachers that were, are asking about student achievement at the elementary schedule, like I said, it's already 9:00 or 9:15 when they're, so of course they're wide awake. I mean, to me, that's kind of a, a given. So that, that's just kind of, and no disrespect to the, to this group. I think they did a great job. I just, for me, you know, I look at those things and, and after-school jobs, yeah, I don't see, I mean, we had someone speak a few weeks ago, I don't see anybody not hiring students because they're going to be coming in later. Those aren't my concerns at all. You know, I am concerned with missing school and things like that, but...
Well, I'd like to make a couple comments. Number one is, of course, great job by the committee and research is undeniable. I don't think any of us can sit here and say the teenagers should start school at the time that they're starting developmentally. And they have a disadvantage, biologically, they can fall asleep, but younger kids have the advantage under normal conditions. Of course, there are always exceptions. They can fall asleep, you know, in a set discipline, family conditions, and, you know, physically if they don't have any element that is against them. Also, part of the research I did, besides all the research has been done, when you look at the high school start times in the 50s and 60s, they weren't this early. And the reason we got earlier and earlier because of the budget costs, budget results and we need to go to two-tier bus systems and try to fit. Now everything is coming back around because everybody find out that's not good for teenagers in the long run. We're seeing a lot of side effects, whether it's a car crash of ST or, you know, just being tired. So 60% of the high schools right now actually starting after 8:00. So there is a tendency, the nation-wise, to looking at this and going back. So, and it started from 1999, so we're talking about 15 years slowly, everybody's kind of merging. So we definitely shouldn't deny the research, but my suggestion will be, I'm really interested in looking at the consideration that any time pushing it, maybe not all the way 30 minutes late, everybody, but somewhere between 15 and 30 minutes, and look into that and especially that doesn't have any cost involved either. Because the other question I have, the $50,000 that involved with the other, where are we going to come up with that money in the budget while we're talking about budget too? So I don't know what were the reasons we dismissed that option, but I thought if everybody inches a little bit, you know, my, I was just looking at a 50... inches a little bit, you know, my, I was just looking at a 15 minutes. Right now, elementary school starts at 9:15 and ends at 3:30. So, I mean, starts at 9 and ends at 3:30. How about we start them 9:15 and end them 3:45 and 4:00? And that will give us high school and middle school start at 8:15 instead of 7:40 or 7:50. So because research also says, even if you have 20-minute delay, that's still pretty advantageous in the long run. So we cannot maybe make them go so late, you know? I know we said it in the resolution, 8:30. Maybe that was, you know, if we have bus for everybody, that would be an ideal situation, but obviously we are not there and we can't be there, so we have to fit what we have budget-wise too. So that will be my recommendation. Can we look into that and can we do that, that inch everybody a little later?
The closest the committee came to that was the third option that we didn't select, which was a 30-minute later time. And that caused elementary to get out at 4:00. So 15 minutes might be something that we could certainly consider.
In a 15, 20 minutes, we know, I mean, obviously you can say 25, 30. But the ideal, if the ideal delaying is maybe minimal, but not, you know, considering the flipping per se, that's what I meant.
The resistance to that was basically at the elementary level of having teachers get out even later than they do now, because now their day typically ends around 5:00 by the time they do bus duty. So, but we did not look at a 15-minute.
You know, of course, I have a lot of elementary teacher friends that I don't know, they may not talk to me after this, but getting up, you know, I know they, some of them, they don't even leave till 5:00. I mean, that's all, we all know that you teachers are staying at school way more than the, you know, time defines, but, you know, maybe the disadvantage there that they can stay instead of, let's say they leave at 4:00 now, 4:15, maybe in the grand scheme of things, because we are worrying about other things like little kids being so early in the dark, maybe that kind of balances out. I mean, somehow, we have to give in and take and accommodate. It's very important in this case, and I think when they look at all the other researchers and all the other systems, they emphasize that we have to really get in all the stakeholders, you know, willing to do this change. It shouldn't be in the price of one, you know, or the other, so. But definitely, we can dismiss the research and I think it will be a big mistake if we don't look at this.
Yeah.
Sorry.
One of the things that really bothers me, well, first of all, thank the committee, you know, a lot of hard work, looking at a lot of information and staying with it for four meetings and then coming here and talking to us late at night. Thank you. But I do have a big concern that the research for elementary is just, they'll be okay, you know? The two that we've looked at, one, too many variables in there that could cause it to be this way, and the other, ah, basically saying, "They'll be okay, no significant issues with the young kids." I don't believe that. I don't believe we have enough research out there to say that changing the hours and having them go earlier is not going to be an issue for the younger kids, because to me, common sense says it will. I understand the research around our secondary students needing to go later. Like I told you, I had one that was there and one that wasn't, but I also understand that sometimes there just needs to be a little bit more discipline. I mean, I'm just, that's just the bottom line for me. Sometimes we just have to be a little bit more disciplined. And we talk about how we're preparing students, you know, to go out and be productive citizens. And yeah, there may be some chemical, there's chemical things that go on throughout your life. Trust me, I'm in one of those. And it does affect how we function, but you have to be disciplined and understand, this is life and you have to deal with it. You have to deal with it. A couple of things that always strike me when we see seniors of the month that I remember is the children who talk about how their faith has, you know, kept them moving through and being successful, and the other talking about time management. And I think we even heard that tonight. Time management, how I manage my time and with all the many things that I have to do, right? So I'm just, I'm really not sold that we really have to do this change, and if we do do it, it would be very, very small, because I just believe we have to teach our young folks, you know, be responsible, be responsible. And this, talking about the ideal world and parents being there or not being there, you know, normal, I don't even know what normal is. One of the things we did in this district many years ago, and we continue to do with our incoming new teachers, is talk about the issues around poverty, which we have a large number of students in this district who live in poverty. And their world is very far from what someone says is normal or I did, normal, right? So, you know, I think we need to look broader than just our back doors when we're talking about this and how it's going to really affect everybody in the district. And again, I can't, I voted yes for us to proceed with this, to look at the information, because I believe we can't operate in the dark. So I appreciate, we're looking at it, we've looked at it, and then we make a decision. We just don't say, "No, let's don't change it," because you have to look at what folks are saying in the community, what the teachers, what the students are saying, and we've done that. So it was kind of led to believe that I voted yes because, to look at the study, because I believed we needed to change it, but I was waiting for the information so I could make up my mind as to what we needed to do. And quite frankly, I'm just not there.
Yeah.
Let me just have one question. Did we look at, is there any time on bus scheduling for like 10 minutes? And the reason I ask that is just because I've spoke with a lot of bus drivers and they're kind of like, you know, "I've got 30 minutes in between the two." I mean, is that, 5 minutes is golden in the morning, you know? That's why I'm kind of like the little, because it doesn't have to be either or, you know? 5 or 10 minutes is golden. It's, and I've spoke with secondary principals that agree. 10 minutes is a mountain. And it, you know, when I was asking some of the bus drivers, you know, "Hey, do you have lap time?" And they were like, "Yeah, most of them do." Now, I may be speaking out of turn, if I am, I'm sorry, but have we looked into that to see if there's 5 minutes on bus scheduling that we could gain so that way, and you could put that on secondary education, see what I'm saying, where add that 5 minutes or that 10 minutes to school start times for them? That way, it doesn't have to affect elementary education, say if you went 8:10 and 9:05, that kind of thing.
That's why we made the comment that we're willing to go back and look at other schedules. It's extensive work to look at bus schedules, especially because you don't know who your new students are every year.
Right, and I understand completely.
So a lot of parameters, we could explore that.
And I'm talking 5 minutes, 7 minutes. I'm not talking 20, 30 minutes, I'm talking little, you know? Because that is, it's, in the morning, 5, 10 minutes is very crucial. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I want to thank the committee. I think, by the looks of it, you've done a marvelous job. And having said that, I would like the committee to put Peggy Keller's research away. She starts off by saying that she theorizes and then she goes on with her theories. Now, I'm not big on believing people's theories. I'd rather have the hard, cold facts, and she doesn't have them. And she states she doesn't have them. It's all theory. So I don't know why we keep bringing that up, but we do. As far as other research has been done, there's been some research done, but not the way they've done it with the high school people. So I agree. I think that more research has to be done with the younger children. What I've read and what I've seen is what you're saying, but I'm not going to hang my hat on what they're saying, because the high school kids, middle school kids, we see proof of that. I don't see it yet with the elementary kids. So there are some discrepancies there. The other thing which I thought was really interesting is that you said that the disadvantaged students were affected mostly. Who are the disadvantaged students and what exactly are you talking about with that?
From looking at that study, it was students in poverty, and Chris can speak to it better than I, but it definitely looked at giving them more of an academic advantage than some advantaged students, if you will. Chris, do you want to speak to that a little bit more?
Step up to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. That information's from Dr. Edwards's study in Wake County, specifically that particular, it's been found in several other studies, but that piece I pulled from Dr. Edwards's study in Wake County. And I can get the exact breakdown, but the disadvantaged students, he said, what he did was he looked at traditionally lower-scoring students and then what those students, what the increases were among those student populations. So if you had a population, he was able to break it down by, his groups are black, Hispanic, free lunch eligible. I mean, he was able to break it down by parent's education and some of the other things that are generally considered to be, they can lower test scores. Then he looked at those test scores and then he looked at what the improvements were for later start times and how much they, these groups that had had a lower test scores improved with the later start times.
Okay, was, were there any studies done in reference to, okay, the disadvantaged, I can understand. What about black students versus white students? Did they see any, anything in that?
In fact, man, I can, if you'd like, I'll try to pull that information just from Dr. Edwards's study and pull just that piece, because he does, he breaks it down by, I think by female, by black, Hispanic, free lunch eligible, parent's education. That goes to a bunch of different, he has a bunch of different categories and then he compares.
Can you get that to us?
Yes, I can send that particular, I'll be happy to send that piece to you.
Okay. Thank you. Where am I? Well, Minnesota started this, what, 15 years ago, and they're still doing it, and they have great positive proof that this thing works. Have any schools that, I know no schools in the state of Virginia have gone back to the other way. Once they've changed, they pretty much stay there and everybody falls in love with this. Do we have any comments or any other schools that have gone back to the other way that we know of?
Don't know of any that have gone back.
I don't either. I've looked at that and I can't find any.
Other than Martinsville went back and then came back to what we're looking at.
And isn't Richmond just indicating that they're going to do this also?
Correct.
So that's another school that's moving forward. Go ahead. Thank you.
You're welcome.
A few comments again. Thank you for all your hard work and hours that has been spent on this. A lot of people have complained that lots of the studies have to do with Fairfax County. And I know one close by that we're, a county we are similar to is Roanoke County. I think you all have talked to them quite a bit. I just wondered if you could share with us more information about when they made their change. I remember lots of editorials in the newspaper about the pros and the cons. What feedback did you get from them about kids in the dark at the bus stop at 6:30? And I know they are on block scheduling at the high school. How are they doing with kids leaving early to go to Athletes? And how much time did they give their community to when they decided to make the change? What was the difference?
Yeah, I was able to talk to several superintendents, as we showed on the slide. And as I went from superintendent to superintendent, this was a roundtable discussion, each one was pretty much, "This is what, that's what we've done, it's been a good change," or "They've done it forever and it's been good forever." Roanoke County specifically, very pleased with what they're doing. They felt like they gave the community time to prepare. I think theirs was six or seven years ago, I may have them confused. They're definitely not thinking of switching back. They've found it to work very well. What none of the superintendents could tell me directly was that there was the direct correlation to academics, because they can't separate it from all the other things that they've done. I asked specifically about the bus stops, especially in Roanoke City, which has one of the earliest start times. Each school division said that had not been an issue. And they do have, if you look on the chart, there's kids getting on the bus very early in the morning, 6:30, 6:45 in some districts, and it has not been a problem.
So they're not having significant tardies in their elementary school?
No, they did not report that.
Do you feel, after a lot of the complaints about the daycare situation in our county, with your, any research that you have done, do you feel like we would have a shortage in our community of daycare?
I do think it's valid that it would take daycare's time to be ready. Our adventure club, and Donna is here tonight, can probably speak to that. I think that's our largest after-school program. And let me just ask Donna, since she's here.
She left.
No, she left. Well, but at our committee, she indicated that she thought they could expand to accept more students. Other daycares may not be, that is easy, that would not be as easy. Rainbow Riders, for instance, has a smaller facility. They would like to expand and I think are looking for a larger facility eventually, but they couldn't do it on a, on a minutes.
But from the surveys and daycare needed, do you feel like if we made a decision now for the fall, places could be ready?
I wouldn't want to speak for every daycare. I think in most cases, yes, but it could be problematic for some daycares. And we did, I think it was 34.9% of parents said that they would need additional daycare.
This may be a question for Ms. Blackburn, but I think it was two years ago when we, one of our budget cuts was changing the bus stops and for 50,000, approximately 50,000 savings. Do we know, was that, did we save any more than 50,000 or was it less? And I'm just thinking about that number when I'm seeing how much this could potentially cost.
I'd have to research it for you. I haven't looked at it lately. We have a number of, in the budget information that I gave you all the other day, we show about $170,000 cut in transportation over the five-year period that we've been making cuts. And I'd have to go back and look at all the individual pieces to really know. I'm happy to do that.
I think that's all my first list. Thank you.
I had one more that I, if I may. All the sleep disorder studies have shown that these youngsters are wired differently. Once they get into those teen years, 13 to 19, and maybe a year here and a year there, that the wiring seems to be very jumbled and their sleep patterns are like nothing we recognize as parents and as adults. Having four children go through those years, I can guarantee you that, Ms. Blackburn, discipline was not the answer, unless my discipline was grab him by the collar and drag him out in his pajamas to the bus stop, because they needed sleep. They really needed sleep. And I would tell them that they went to bed at 10:00, but I forgot to go in and check them every 15 minutes because they're under the sheets with a flashlight, reading or doing something. And this is the makeup of that child. And sleep study after sleep study after sleep study has shown and proven that, okay, there's individuals that will respond to your discipline and probably do this, but as a whole, this animal just doesn't work the way they're supposed to work between, the sleep patterns I'm talking about, between the ages of 13 and 19. It's just proven.
Just to answer back to that, Edward Finley's research probably spoke best to that when he said that there was a significant positive effect with eighth graders, much less effect with sixth graders. He said, "Because puberty is kicking in by the eighth grade." And so that sixth grade in below, so his research really showed that, yes, there's something to the sleep research. You see the effects with the eighth graders, they're dramatic. The sixth graders didn't see the effects as much. Now, obviously, some sixth graders are reaching puberty by then, but more so the eighth graders, it really showed the difference, which goes back to sleep.
When my kids were in elementary school, there weren't enough walls in my house for them to bounce off.
Right.
And, I mean, it was just amazing how, I would have loved to have got them out and in school. in school. Anyway.
And that's funny that you say that because my four-year-old granddaughter, I have to wake up at 7:30 to take her to daycare. I mean, and she doesn't want to get up and she's crying and she lays back down at daycare and there's many other children laying back down at daycare at 7:30. So I see it completely different. And my 15-year-old daughter would stay in bed till 2 or 3 o'clock on Saturdays and I have to come home from work and go, are you still in bed? So yes, I agree they need sleep, but they will sleep all day and all night. I, I, I hear it, I see it, I can support a small change, but I cannot support a big one.
Board members, any other comments?
I just have a few. First and foremost, should we make this change, nothing says that we have to do it this coming school year. We could delay it for another year. We could delay voting on it. I think we, a lot of us have felt the pressure to make a decision now. I don't know that a decision needs to be made now or has to be made now. And I think when we do vote on it, we do need to give ample time. I don't think at this, even at this point, if we were to vote on it tonight, I don't think it's enough time to make the adjustments for next school year. With all that said, I was waiting tonight with the presentation for anything to be presented from you guys to convince me of my opinion going into this, which was, I was not for the, the time change at all. And I did not receive anything that changes my mind. My biggest concern, and I will echo that that Ms. Franklin shared, there is absolutely not enough research to see how this affects elementary age students. And without, with the lack of that research, I just cannot, with any kind of competence, vote to make any kind of a change. With all that said, I do know that we will have a recommendation, if not tonight, in the future weeks from Ms. Blackburn. And until that time, I would, one thing I, I would like to maybe perhaps reinvestigate is the start time, shifting the start time so that it's more like 8 o'clock as the earliest time that we start. You know, that, I think we've all kind of alluded to making, even if it's just a 10 to 15-minute time change, shifting it. Definitely would, would be interested to hear some more thoughts and some more consideration for that. With that, I'm done.
Quick comment. Part of it, there is no research for elementary because they didn't need to be researched in the same context of teenagers need to be researched because they are the one biologically lacking sleep. And elementary kids are not lacking in the same context with looking at the sleep disorders and the, the cycle of sleep. That's why there's not research out there, but that, you know, and then, and 60% of high schools already going after 8:00, 8:00 AM to school. And every nation's high schools are trying to change, which used to be 50s and 60s, used to be late start for everybody. So there is a trend that is going to come to our way, if not this year, next year, or year to come, but there's something we can't really dismiss. That's what I'm trying to say.
And I would like to understand better, and I think our community wants to know, what is our plan? Because our current upcoming meeting schedule shows that in two weeks, we're going to have a recommendation from the superintendent. And then from, in two weeks from there, we're going to vote on that. So I'd like to understand if that is our, still our current plan. I think that that should be. We should hear from Ms. Blackburn and we should vote yea or nay on it. And with all this work that has been invested in it, we need to, whether, we need to go forward with that schedule and the community wants to know what our plan is.
As I told you all in the update, I'm not going to make a recommendation this evening because I very recently got the final information from the committee myself and I don't want to hurry into it. And because all of the board members will not be present to actually vote in the next three weeks until March, the first meeting in March, I felt that gave me a little more time to be able to take a closer look at a couple of things as well. In addition, I'm doing a little closer look at some of the bus transportation schedules and certainly I've heard the things that you've said this evening. And that gives me some additional food for thought also. So my plan is hopefully to bring you a recommendation possibly as early as February 3rd, but no later than the second meeting in February. And I think all of us sitting here know that if you make a recommendation and you approve something, you still have a decision point about when you want to implement. And as the clock ticks, it gets harder to get all the pieces in place. So you would have the option. And I would have the option as well of recommending a change, but recommending that it be delayed to the 16, 17 school year, which gives everybody ample opportunity to prepare. I would reiterate two things that were said. You know, one, the research is overwhelming about the impact on secondary school students. And we do have a problem with secondary school student achievement in Montgomery County, a very specific problem and a very serious problem that included three of our four high schools being accredited Warren, which currently includes one of our middle schools being accredited Warren. And if you look at where SOL testing takes place, it doesn't take place in K-1, 2. It takes place in 3, 4, 5, who are the kids who are moving in the direction of that changing sleep pattern. The second thing that I would reiterate is that the, there are only two major research pieces. One of them is based a lot on what I would call less than scientific methodology in terms of approaching a discussion. The other one, the person very clearly said, researchers don't waste their time on stuff that doesn't have any basis. And that's why there's no research, or very little research on elementary student. So I'm not going to be able to give you elementary research because I have another job to do and I can't go do this research. But, you know, I am going to hear what you said and I am going to look for what I can find in this mix. But I think that it is nationwide, you know, 60% of the schools are after 8 o'clock. Every time you look at the VSBA news clips, there's another Virginia school that's taking a look at delaying times. We don't have $2 million to do it. You know, if you, if you had $2 million, I probably could give you the ideal solution. So I'm going to use a little time to deliberate and see if I can find from the, all the great work that the committee did and from my review of that, as well as your commentary this evening and the great questions that you asked Dr. Graham, see what kind of a miracle I can work.
So would it be $2 million to have enough buses for us all to start between 8 and 8:30?
It would be close to that. And even that, at $2 million, you would be picking up kids at 7, at 7:00 AM. And I kind of considered that the limit of what was acceptable. So I'm still looking at that 7:00 AM piece and trying to find what might work for this community. But the, the research is overwhelming about the secondary school student achievement and it is an issue for us. And for me to turn my head and not pay attention to that would not be appropriate for me.
And, and I would just add, I would hope that, that we would get the information on the disadvantaged students as soon as possible because that sounds to me like over, that's overwhelming also.
We just hadn't published that because we didn't have permission from that, where it was published, but I think we can send it directly to you.
That's critical also. Thank you.
I stated from the very beginning, when the proposed schedule timeline was up, that I would not be here on the 17th. And I think Mr. Ivors has said since then, he wouldn't be here on February 17th when this is scheduled. So I'm not sure what I was hearing from the superintendent tonight. Are you looking at something on the 17th or something at the first meeting in March?
I said I would make a recommendation either February 3rd or second meeting in February for the board to, to may have an opportunity to act on, no earlier than March the 3rd. So you would have it for information and action before you're asked to, so March.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, you know, the follow-up with some of the questions that you all asked for additional information with our committee is something else that I'll be doing. And again, on behalf of the board, all of whom, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
And on behalf of me, I, I really appreciate the hard work you've done. I think you've done an excellent job. I don't think you've left any stone unturned. And I know it has not been easy. And again, Dr. Graham, thank you for facilitating a very tough process. So the next item is a first reading of policy 1-1.5 mission vision and guiding principles. And this is the first reading. This is the mission vision guiding principles that you in substance approved back in November when we were working with advanced ed, but then again consolidated as we worked on into the spring. And we just haven't brought it to you to integrate into your policies. So it's before you this evening for first reading.
Are you asking for questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes. Anything?
Yeah, I, I've said this before and I'll say it again. If you look at this chart, it's got instruction, assessment, relationship and so on. And then over in one of those pies is engagement. And I, it's my opinion that engagement is all of it, not just one little pie. I don't think assessment is all of it. I don't think relationship is necessarily all, but engagement is all of it. And, and I'm looking at a big circle that goes around that, that says engagement. But again, that's just me.
I think what we're trying to communicate really is that we saw the centerpiece in this being the effective instruction. And that teachers, to accomplish effective instruction, have to bring in all of these pieces every day, every time they interact with kids. And I agree with you, I think engagement is the glue that holds it together, but you've got this person who's in charge of making it happen. So they are your person who's delivering instruction and their role is to bring the pieces together to impact the kids.
And I was very encouraged when relationship became a focus for the district, understanding that's how you engage students. Because if you don't have a relationship with me, you can do whatever you want to do and it's not going to engage me. As far as our mission statement, I, I still like the word global citizen in there.
I would just say that this is your draft that you approved in concept when you last looked at it. And so it's here for you to either say yea or nay.
I agree with Ms. Franklin. I think it is a global, we, I'm hoping we're producing global citizens.
You know, you can only put so many words in a document. And you know, sometimes you have to make some assessments that they, there, it's there, it's said, whether it be spoken or unspoken. And, you know, one of the things that I would say to you is if you change this nail, you go back to the same issue that we had raised when the advanced ed team visited us. Because one of the key pieces of feedback from advanced ed was that the stakeholders were concerned because the board had in essence changed the mission vision through their work and not brought the stakeholders on board. And that's very clearly stated in the exit report from advanced ed. So my statement to you would be, if you want to change this, fine. But if you want to change it, we need to go back to the stakeholders and provide them another opportunity for input, which basically recirculates the process that you just went through. Just a comment, not suggesting that you do either way, you know, either way, but to do so with your eyes wide open.
And I thought we had a great exercise with stakeholders from many areas in the community and the school system to come up with these words. And it's not an easy exercise and I, I would agree that we need to keep it the way it is.
Ms. Blackburn, if I may, the mission vision and core values was part of the six-year plan. If it's helpful for the board, we could certainly include that as we send out more information in the coming weeks so that you've got the six-year plan side by, the new version of the six-year plan that you have approved, side by side with this new policy update, if that would be helpful and beneficial.
So in essence, they'd need to go back and revisit the comprehensive plan, six-year plan as well as.
I believe so. Dr. Graham is the expert on that.
It would definitely need to be consistent.
I, I can live with this, but in my own little mind, I will always say responsible global citizen.
I can agree with that, Joe.
And I tend to agree with Ms. Blackburn. You know, the simplicity of it, I think is good. If we do start adding too many words, I think it does add a little bit of, it makes it a little convoluted. I do have one question, speaking of simplicity. Is there any reason for us to include what our slogan is in this or is that something completely separate?
It's separate and it's in the comprehensive plan, I believe.
Okay, so it does not need to be included in this? Okay. Any other comments, board members?
So this is just a draft and we'll, it'll be brought to us again?
It is actually your first reading. So it'll come back in the same form it is right now for a second reading unless you direct me to do otherwise.
I think I'm hearing that we're good? Okay.
The next item is supplemental appropriations. Funds have been received as a reimbursement of expenditures for universal services discounts E-rate in the amount of $306,820. And for the before and after-school programs expenditure reimbursement, $300,000. Supplemental appropriation is required to the fiscal year 1415 school operating budget for the expenditures to incur, to be incurred. You may recall from last week's presentation that this is one of the accounting procedures that I have recommended changing to regular reporting of the revenue when possible. The item this evening is for the two programs that I have recommended that you change in the future. This is presented this evening for.
Action.
Action.
Do I have a motion to authorize a request to the board supervisor for a supplemental appropriation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Does the revenue that the schools receive from this, does it go back to that specific school to spend their?
They get, they get the revenue from the program, yes, they do. And they use it for the benefit of the school system, of the school purchases, supplies as they see fit. They have to pay from their receipts, all of their labor costs, et cetera. And Katie, I don't believe there's any other charge this school for operating from the system perspective. No. We have, I think, three that are doing, two that are doing it right now.
Any other comments or questions, board members? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the next item is to approve a preliminary 2015-16 operating budget for a public hearing. I presented the 1516 needs-based operating budget to you on January 15th. Tonight, it along with the school nutrition budget is presented for your approval. So that it may also be moved to public hearing, which is scheduled for January 27th at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a motion to accept the operating budget for a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, board members?
I will be voting yes to move this budget forward because even though I have, may have some concerns with the process, a needs-based budget is what I've always felt. have some concerns with the process, a needs-based budget is what I've always felt we need to put forth. In fact, we could put some more needs in there, but it wouldn't make a big difference if money's not there.
Any other comments? I do want to make sure that the public understands a couple of things just with this. What we're approving tonight is not the budget that we're going to end up with. This is just, in fact, the budget that we submit for your input. Once that, we get your input, we do vote on maybe a, perhaps a revised budget. It could stay the same. We then vote on that to go to the, the board of supervisors and then, once they give us their input, let us know how much money we're going to be getting, then we vote on, vote on a final budget. So just make it very clear, this is not our final budget. This is what we are requesting. And with that said, any other discussion?
Oh, I would add the word possibly, because it possibly could be our final budget.
Could be. It could be. If we get the money. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We have a operating budget to permit, to propose to the public.
My final item this evening is the monthly facilities update. Mr. Berenado.
Couple of the bigger projects, well, the big one is moving into AMS was completed and school started earlier this month. And that was a move in, but I wanted you to know that was a move out, too. And all the people, technology guys, facility guys, warehouse people, just did a magnificent job, we thought. And even got their winter holidays in there, so Christmas and New Year's and worked out really well. And I'm very proud of them. We're also looking at the projects coming up. Our two roof projects that we had planned at Shawzeal Middle School and Gilbert Lenkis, we're preparing the solicitation right now. We plan on advertising those two projects from January 29th to February 12th and getting bids on February 12th. And then we'll be, take a while to analyze those and see where we are with the budget. We're also designing a project that was in the capital maintenance project presentation as a third roof project. That's the gym at Falling Branch and we're working with the roof designer on that now. And we hope to get that also advertised and not too long after the other two. We did have some movement on some of these projects. The third one down Harding Avenue, safe routes to school, contract is, was awarded by the town of Blacksburg on that. They had to get a little bit of extra money from VDOT, which they did get. And the town appropriated that extra money. And I think it was just last week it was awarded, I think, to DCI Shires. And we're anticipating a pre-construction meeting soon and construction in the spring and the summer. And we're working very closely with the school to make sure everything's kept safe. Couple other safe routes to school projects there at Bellevue and Auburn. You may see an RFP, a request for proposals out, that the county planning office is putting out for architecture and engineering services for those. So that's not, we're just at the very beginning of that process for those two projects. We did complete and Auburn High School completed and we helped out a little bit, the new ticket booth at the stadium entrance. And we got one new project that came in, which is actually the second phase of a previous project, which is, this phase is moving the batting cages that were put up at the old Blacksburg High School over to the new Blacksburg High School at the baseball softball fields. And it talked, communicated with Mr. Meadows today, and this is the same update on the disposition of former school properties as we gave you in November. He says there has been no further information or nothing that has gone beyond this at this Any questions?
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. Board members, is there any unfinished business to address at this point?
I don't know if this is unfinished or new. We've discussed the need for a position to be filled in District E. Do we have applications for that?
We have one applicant.
One.
But the deadline is end of business tomorrow.
I didn't hear you.
It closes end of business tomorrow, but we have one at this time and still 24 hours to see if we get another.
Any other unfinished business? Going to pass out to each board member, this is the questions that have been submitted for the District E candidates, compiled. There's one question for each one of us to ask. The order that you see there, just the order that I received the questions in, so as we move into that process in the coming meetings, we will use those questions as for our interview on the third, I believe it is. No other unfinished business? Any new business?
Interviews, I think, are not on the third, all right? We're interviewing them the day that we have public hearing.
Oh, you're right, right. Sorry, that is a change. It should be.
Twenty.
Twenty-seventh, correct?
Yep.
Should be the 27th. You are correct.
So the interview is not this date, it's the 27th?
It's the 27th, yes. Third is when we actually vote on it.
Yeah, appoint, appoint them.
Okay, new business?
Yeah, well, I just have one other comment. On the third, we're going to have a open mic type thing. What is that? What is that about?
I think that's on the 20, the 29th and we're having a public hearing for the, for the District E candidates.
On the 29th?
Yes, it's on a Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Okay.
That's in the.
And, and that's for the public to comment?
Comment on it.
To comment on the candidates.
Okay.
Okay, new business?
I have one item. Couple days ago, the few of us on the school board, Ms. Ivors and Ms. Karan and I myself received an email from the president of Blacksburg High School, PTSO. And then as a follow-up, we've gotten several emails from some parents. And the subject was be, study hall rejected was the subject. And the questions are really being asked why this was, this request from the school was rejected. And so just wondering if I could, you know, get some more information about this. And also, my question is to understand better just the process in the school system is how this becomes a central office decision versus a school decision. And then finally, I learned that the, there is a policy that says if a student is taking certain number of AP courses and dual enrollment, they are allowed to do a study hall. And I just wondered, is that a policy at school level or is that a policy that we set? And I, I didn't find it anywhere that we set that kind of policy. So I didn't know if I was just not finding it or if it's somewhere else.
It's in procedures. It's not a policy. What the, what it says is that a school may allow a student to have a study hall if they are enrolled in three or more AP or dual enrollment courses. Now, whether BHS is actually implementing that or not, I do not know because back in 1990, they discontinued the use of study halls at BHS by their choice at that time and implemented instead a movement towards student aides, which is what you have seen even this fall. So I would have to ask them specifically if they are allowing any study halls, but if they are not, they would be allowed with the current guidance to permit study halls in that instance.
And so if that's a policy that we set, that defines that, that's in proceed, when you say procedures, that's procedures at a school level?
It's procedures at the district level for scheduling secondary students.
And so at a future meeting, can I get some more information about these emails that we're getting in regard to the study hall rejection information?
I'm happy to respond to the queries. I'll respond to the emails that I've received as well. Most of them are coming to me as well.
Yeah. I didn't see any of them until that one was forwarded to me, so. Any other new business? Okay, announcements and information.
I have two announcements. One of them to congratulate Blacksburg High School Theater students. They went to, two of them went to Virginia State Thespian Conference and Morgan and Levi qualified for Nationals in the solo musical theater category. So that's a pretty big honor and it will be really fun if they can perform for us at some point, to see. And the other announcement is this Friday at 4:00 PM at Perspective Gallery at Squires, they have an opening of Blacksburg High School Art Students exhibit. And I think their work is related to Martin Luther King Day, Tide, whatever they created. And I think the exhibit stays there for three, four weeks. But the opening reception is this Friday at 4:00. That's all.
Any other announcements or information? Okay, upcoming school board meetings. You see that we, the AMS dedication is on the 25th, this Sunday. Hope everyone is able to attend that. Next week, we have two public hearings. The first one for the initial budget proposal and then also to interview District E candidates. And then on Thursday, the public hearing to, for the District E candidates. So, and then obviously our February 3rd regularly scheduled meeting and February 17th. Any questions with any of that? Right, I need a motion to re-enter into closed session to discuss, to continue discussion of one personnel matter as authorized by section 2.2-3, 711 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved.
I, I need a minute.
This is, Brenda gave us a look because we certified closed session and we probably shouldn't have.
I'm, I'm going to need a minute.
Okay.
Please.
Forgot to tell her.
And are we having a different agenda item for this closed session? It wasn't previously announced. I'm assuming it's a continuation. Now you're seeing how the sausage is made when we're putting these meetings together. All right, so we're going, you already closed and certified closed session, so essentially you are entering into a new closed session.
Mm-hmm.
And 9:43, I apologize for that. I was caught a little bit off guard, but I am ready now whenever you guys are.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are back in closed session.